December 2nd, Board of Education meeting in session. All members are accounted for. Would you plead, the Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready within the greater community. Please join with me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by the North High Air Force JROTC, Commander Solidad Vilbus, Katana Quinton, Ariel Betancourt, and Julia Chavez. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
colors. Colors, hold. Left, face. Freezer, colors. Sir, request permission to post the colors.
You may post the colors.
Thank you, sir. Order, colors. Colors, hold. Freezer, arms. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms. About, face. Forward, march.
A round of applause for the North High Air Force JROTC. Very precise, unlike my pronunciation of their names. Latonya, first item, please.
Good news.
Tonight, we're going to recognize the, we recognized earlier, our middle school students selected for the Kansas Music Association, KMEA All-State Choir, and students from all three levels who were selected for the Kansas Music Educators Association All-State Choir, and also the Band Orchestra as well. Shaun?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. One of the highest honors any student musician can achieve is being selected to perform for members of one of Kansas's professional music education organizations such as KMEA or SCKMEA. And as with all of our WPS Fine Arts students, we take pride in these selected students' many musical accomplishments and are grateful for tonight's opportunity to celebrate their participation in these honor ensembles. Congratulations, honor music students. We are all WPS proud of each of you. Success only happens with many hard hours of work by dedicated student musicians and those who support them. Our exceptional music education staff, along with our students' parents and families, are be, to be commended for attaining, maintaining, and supporting such high musical standards. Since printing, our honor number has grown to 170, representing over 15 schools and over 25 teachers. Thanks again to those WPS music directors who guided the student nomination and audition process with such success. We appreciate the time that they provide to work with our students during class and outside of the school day. And finally, to our WPS administration and to our Board of Education and District leadership, you also deserve a standing ovation. These honor groups are simply an extension of the natural skills and abilities and talents that our students and staff support in our music classrooms on a daily basis. And we appreciate your attendance at tonight's beautiful reception. Thank you, Board Table, for being there. Finally, again, the Wichita Public Schools would like to thank our state's professional music education organizations for the opportunity to share our talented students with such a distinguished audience of music educators from across our region and state. We are WPS proud of our future-ready performers thriving at KMEA and SCKMEA. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaun. And we thank everyone who was involved in setting up that reception. Wonderful representation of our school district and our Fine Arts Department. Thanks again to everyone who involved in that. Latonya, next item.
United Teachers of Wichita.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, BOE President Reeser, BOE Vice President Albert, distinguished board members, and Superintendent Beilefeld. Tonight, I want to highlight pressing challenges facing our educators and share some updates on some collaborative efforts we've been working on with the district. I first wanted to talk about our special education educators. They, it's a very high-needs field, and we receive a lot of calls from our special ed teachers. It's very challenging. And so, last month, we went to SEIU because their place was larger, and we had an evening where we had some pizza and invited special education educators to discuss their workload issues and concerns. The feedback we received was clear. The educators are facing an overwhelming workload and many challenges. Some of the challenges and concerns included balancing teaching, IEP management, behavior interventions, and crisis response is overwhelming to them. Many educators work an extra 10 to 20 hours weekly outside the contract time to manage their paperwork, caseloads, and planning. In the secondary schools, they had some extra planning time, and so this year, they lost some of that planning time. And the teachers said that the loss of that extra planning time in the high schools made it more difficult for special ed teachers to meet their compliance requirements and connect with their students, impacting their ability to support graduation goals and future-ready planning for those students. Burnout and retention concerns continue to arise under these conditions. The room was packed, we had to order a lot more food. I mean, the special education professionals, they came out. I know there's a lot of concerns with keeping paras as well and meeting minutes, so I just kind of wanted to share that. Mike Harris and I, we met with Dr. Evans, Mrs. Zimmerman, and Mr. Allman to discuss these concerns right before the break, so, and just kind of some different ideas on how to best support our special ed staff. The next thing I wanted to talk about is we are partnering with AFT National, Microsoft, and Rob Dixon to explore using AI to save some time and resources for our special education teachers, knowing that they have such a heavy workload and so much paperwork. The initiative aims to streamline their high workload tasks, like looking at different accommodations, IEP management, and giving them more time for them to focus on their And so, we're exploring this pilot project. We had a great meeting with Microsoft, they want to come out, they're really excited. I talked, I spoke with Superintendent Beilefeld a little bit about this before the break. And Mike Harris, he delivered a fabulous presentation to Microsoft and kind of talked about the vision and the partnership. So that was really, really exciting. Let's see, so that's one way we'd like to help address some concerns, but the needs are very, very high for special ed. Another thing, I don't know if you're aware, but beginning July 1st, 2028, Kansas veteran teachers that are elementary educators, they will need to demonstrate knowledge in the science of reading to renew their license, and so there'll be a seal on their license that they've done the science of reading. Teachers right now are meeting this requirement by completing their letters training, or they can pass the Praxis test. And there's, there's a small group of, I think administrators, that maybe did the previous version, so they may have to take the Praxis, and, but they'll need it to be, to stay a teacher, will get their license renewed. So, we, I talked last year about the peer consultants, we sent four of them to an NEA training on how to help support teachers with taking the Praxis, just different tips. Some people have test anxiety and get nervous, and in practice, you know, what questions you can expect. So, we're partnering with Amanda Sharshul to look at maybe doing some trainings to provide Praxis prep for our staff as well. So, we remain committed to working together to support our staff and students so we can address today's challenges and build a brighter future for Wichita Public Schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Latona, next item, please.
Service Employees International Union.
I do not see ESOW or another representative, so we'll move on to the next item. Go ahead.
Public Communications.
We have one speaker tonight, Patricia Heilman. Welcome, Patricia.
Thank you, Stan. Members of the BOE, no, Mr. Beilefeld, sorry, I was gonna, I was gonna up ya to a doctor, no, sorry. Thank you for your service, first of all. I recognize that you guys all volunteer so many hours of your time and so much commitment to our community, and as I'm here to bring concerns, that's not always comfortable and not always fun, but, but I hope that you understand that we're, I completely recognize we're trying to work together for the best of Wichita. So, I'm Trish Heilman, 139 South Fountain, and I've worked in Wichita education for a long time, mainly because my own five kids have come up through this program, including two special needs boys, which trained me in advocacy, as you might imagine. I've been speaking with fellow community members in some of my roles with WIN Wichita Independent Neighborhoods, and as a mom, and as a parent association president, and all the things you get to do. And, and I've heard quite a few concerns about this new bond issue, and I wanted to share those with you. Some of that is so that you guys can maybe address the concerns, speak to them, educate, clarify, maybe even change pivot a little bit, and your messaging might be warranted. So, replacement of well-built buildings. I'm an old-school building girl, I live in a 100-year-old house, I love north, I love east, anyway, you get the picture. These old buildings were built in a way that the new buildings aren't. And I have been in new buildings as a parent and watched buildings, brand-new buildings leak like sieves, and I've not seen the same level of building in the new buildings that we've recently built that I see in our old buildings. So, I am concerned as a community member that we're, big piece of our plan is to tear down old buildings and put in new buildings that I don't feel are as well-built. So, other practices, some of the trust of the past has been eroded because there are a lot of parts of the community that feel like we did bait-and-switch things with Southeast High and with Northeast High, I'd heard about that one just today in the northeast part of our community, that, that we've done some things, that we said we were going to do this with our bond issue, and then we didn't. And maybe we didn't listen very effectively either when the community spoke up about that. Lack of specificity, woo-hoo, I said it right. So, this is where a lot of people are saying, "I need the details of the plan before I can know how to vote on this. I need to know, are we buying parkland? How is my neighborhood changing? Exactly what is going on?" Because if I don't have those hardcore details, and you're not committed to sticking to those, again, that whole, you know, thing, then I can't educated, bring an educated vote. Clear, transparent, above-reproach communication. Suggesting the taxes aren't new? Ah, of course they're new, we're building new things, we're getting new taxes. Come on, be, yep, I, oh, sorry, yep, you're right. Okay, leading questionnaire. Staff are being told to only be supportive, don't control staff speech, and thank you for your time.
And Patricia, I did receive that email about the very ending that we kind of rushed you through, and we'll make sure each board member gets that as well.
Thank you so much. I had a computer problem, so I didn't actually get it to all the board members, so thank you for disseminating.
We appreciate you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Latona, next item, please.
Education Strategic Plan Goal 3, Create and Enhance Safety and Belonging.
Those of who've been following, we went over Strategic Plan Goal 1 and 2, and tonight, on equal footing, is a presentation on our Strategic Plan Goal number 3 on Create and Enhance Safety and Belonging. Mr. Superintendent?
All right, thank you. Welcome to Michelle Inglethron, she's going to lead our presentation today. Equal footing's probably a good way to put it, but it's also, it's an interesting balance how the different strategic playing goals interact with one another. You can't have, kids don't graduate if they don't feel like they belong, if they don't feel safe. They're never going to get to post-secondary things if they don't graduate, you know, that, we want graduation, but we also want belonging. So, they're all really interconnected, and I'm not sure, you know, 1, 2, and 3 feels like a ranking, but it's not really a ranking, it should probably be A, B, and C or something like that, I don't know. So, foundational to what we've been doing over the past few years has been working on this. Coming out of COVID, we knew that kids needed connection, they had lost some connection with other classmates and other, other kids in connection with the school. So, there has been an intentional focus on this, as you know. So, Michelle is going to share some data tonight and walk us through the goal, and then we'll have time for questions, so take it away, Michelle.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you guys allowing me to be here, it's been a minute, and so thanks for actually having me back. I wanted to start today by just bringing us back to the goal, and part of the strategic plan is to create and enhance safety and belonging, and that is the purpose of the survey that I'm going to talk about, was for us to get, get an idea, do some dipsticks and some check-ins to see where, where kids are and how we're doing as a system. So, you will see where we were. So, we, you guys set the goal last year to increase the percentage of students that feel safe and connected to our schools from 80.3% to 90% by 2029. So, this is a review of that spring survey that we gave last April and broke it out by building level, so you can see how we got that average. Where we are now is we just completed a fall survey, was, which was completed in October, and you will see that we did decrease by five percentage points, and we're going to talk through some of that today as, as well as some action steps that we're going to take moving forward. So, I wanted to kind of start with some, and continue with where we are, with some variables for us to consider. And I, as, as I wrote down the word variables, I thought, well, I'm going to really have to explain this because I don't want this to sound like an excuse, right? We are using these variables already to help us process how we can better connect to the kids in front of us, to help us process the strategies that we need to use and the things that we need to do differently, to, to be able to reach our goal and enhance how kids feel when they come to school. So, I am going to speak about some variables as a starting point for us in our planning and for us to adjust our course. So, you have a table here. We took, as I mentioned earlier, in April, we took the spring survey, that was in April at the end of the year. This year, we took the survey in the fall, which was in October, so not too long ago. So, we had a beginning-of-the-year survey this year and an end-of-year survey last year. I'm going to go through and give you some more data to kind of show the differences between those two administrations of the survey. You can see there again are the, the variables in, in the positive responses that we did go down by five percentage points. When we think about the administration in April, we had kids all year, they were with us, right? We had a longer period of time to build relationships, to connect, to be able to collaborate with kids, with families. And administering it in October, we, we didn't, right? It was pretty, pretty quickly into the school year. We also had some transitions for kids, we have fifth graders moving into middle school, and we have eighth graders moving into high school. Again, these are variables, not excuses, right? So, the, when we think about administering in October and knowing that we had a decrease in, in, in our, in our percentage points of the way we wanted it to go, we need to think about, that helps us plan and think about, what do we do differently at the beginning of every school year from here on out, right? Looking at our strategies, looking at the activities that we do with kids, looking at how we're building relationships and connecting. There's also a huge discrepancy you'll see there between the number of students who actually took the survey and gave us some responses. So, that difference in sample size is for a couple of reasons. One is that we need parent permission to be able to administer the survey, parents have to give us permission. So, in the spring of last year, we used the ParentView Field Trip form, the app, right? And so, we sent messages, and not everybody looks at that, right? Not everybody, everybody, all parents responded. A lot of parents are like me, and I have to go try to find my password, right, to, to get into that, because I have a bunch of different passwords. So, there, we had a lower response rate than we had hoped for. When you look at the fall of this year, we used enrollment to our advantage in August, in July, the end of July, and we asked families during enrollment to consent to online registration. So, anybody who walked through our doors to enroll their child had the opportunity to do that as part of the enrollment process. So, it was literally click a button as you're going through enrollment. That then changed that from five, around 5,000 students taking the survey to around 18,000 students taking the survey. So, I'm not a statistician, but I know one that works in my office space. So, Will, Will Graves and I were talking about the, the difference in that sample size, and he talked about, if you think about that, the, in the spring, April of last year, was approximately one out of 10 kids at every building would take that survey. This year, we had one out of three students respond, which is what we want, right? We want a bigger sample size, but it does lend itself to some discrepancies. So, this spring, we want to take it again, right? We want to see our progress from fall to spring. So, we are going to target those permissions at parent-teacher conferences in February, and we're going to try to do the, the app again, because we, we're not going to re-enroll, but we'll use the app, and then we'll, parents will be at school, so if they can hopefully scan a QR code, we're going to, we're working on that. And then they can opt-in right there at conferences, if they don't know that ParentView password, there's somebody in the office to help them look that up or change it. So, we're hoping to get, again, that same larger sample size. So, again, not excuses, how do we get better, right? How do we continue to make progress? The, and I did talk about the, the transitions as well. We also added three new questions this year, which, again, is a change in, in the process, right? So, just some things for us to think about as we move forward and adjust our course. So, where are we going? We are, we're going to try to learn from these variables, and in fact, we're already doing it. We're looking for areas of opportunity to connect, to be more connected with families and with kids in the classroom, to be more collaborative. When we think about, and you have a, on the slide, a picture of the social engagement window from our work with Restorative Practices, right? Our goal is to be with families, with kids, with teachers, right, with staff, offering high support, but also some high accountability, and I know that you all have some high accountability for us as well to, to get this done. So, the things that we're thinking about as we continue to try to make progress are having each of our buildings look at their data review. I know secondary has already done that, elementary will do that next week at our PLCs with principals. Connecting and collaborating with each other and also with staff and parents. Professional learning alignment. So, do we, when I think about that, I think about things like intentional lesson plans with collaboration embedded. So, what strategies can we help teachers with when it comes to getting kids to collaborate with each other, right, to collaborate with the teacher, to have that shared learning space? And then share the building data with parents to garner ideas for improvement. Their kids come home and they talk to them every evening, and they have a true sense of how their kids feel and what they need, so we will, we haven't started that yet, but we are working through that process of what that might look like, sound like, and feel like, and how we can best reach the most parents that, that we can, right? So, with that, I will, I will leave it to Superintendent Beilefeld.
Very good, thank you, Michelle. A couple other notes. They have the, the copy of this.
Yes, they do.
Do you want to explain what that is real quick?
Yeah, I just took, I didn't have all of the data in the PowerPoint, so I took each one of those questions, and I put from last year to this year, so that you could take a look at, at the similarities and differences among questions. Those, those are some of the things we're digging into ourselves.
And you can see that some of them actually went up, some of them went down. Some of them make a lot of logical sense, where I feel like an adult knows me well. Well, at the beginning of the year, you probably don't feel that way as much as you do at the end of the year, but that doesn't mean it's okay. A couple things that I, I just wanted to lift up. I'm glad you pointed out the parent permission, that's a piece of the challenge of surveying students now, is this timeframe that we only have four months to get parent permission, and then it expires, and then we have to go back and get parent permission again. That's a legislative requirement at this point, which honestly seems a little silly that I have, as a parent, if I'm okay with it in August, and I'm probably going to be okay with it in January, and I could probably opt out of it if I wanted to later, but it is what it is. So, that's part of why those numbers fluctuated the way they did. We'll do a, maybe a more intentional push, and hopefully, as parents get in this cadence of fall and spring, th, those numbers will go up as far as participation goes. I do think, and I, I was glad to hear, you know, Katie tonight, because I do think one of the things that's easy to do is just say, "Oh, you know, these numbers are going down" or whatever, but, you know, to hear "solution-focused," that we're going to look at ways to solve these problems together, that's really where, where the focus needs to be looking forward. But you also know, and I think you value us being transparent with where we're at, right? You know, do we love showing a 5% decrease in these numbers? No, we don't, but there's work to do, and I think we know that. And I think our discussion this morning, these numbers probably don't surprise us because I do think we're hearing more about some of the safety issues in schools. How people define safety, though, can be very, very broad, and that's part of why to dig into it at a building level is important. This could be, "We need a secured entrance," we almost have everyone done, but we're not quite there yet. This could be, "There's a bullying situation in third grade." This could be, you know, "The parking lot's unsafe for the, the drive," we talked a little bit about that this morning, too, "the driveway's unsafe, so I know my school's not safe." So, there's, you know, this is a broad brush, and we really need to dig deeper into it. So, I appreciate Michelle and Lauren's building-level focus, getting down to the building level, because that's really where a lot of these solutions lie. We know, as you've all been out in our buildings a lot, our buildings have different cultures, they have different sizes, they have different staffs, they have different personalities, and so, it can't be a one-size-fits-all by any means as far as the solutions. And the one thing I don't think I heard you say, that I, I don't want to make an assumption, but we did have a lot of welcoming schools this year, and so, that was a systemic choice that we made to create a new sense of belonging for that student. And I think our welcoming schools have worked really hard to wrap their arms around those families and kids and bring them in, but I'm sure it's not the same. I'm sure if you were at four years at Cleveland and now you're at Black, I'm sure it's not the same. So, that's another consideration. Again, a way that we need to strategize to, to get this number back up to 80%, to get it to 90, where we want it to be. But I want to close with this, we're still at 75%, right? And that isn't, that isn't a terrible number. I think sometimes when you hear, you know, when, when your tire pressure light goes on on your right, left, or your, you know, driver-side front tire, you're only worried about one tire, your other three tires are doing fine, right? But you are worried about the one tire, and you need to address that tire because it's not safe. But just because that comes on, that doesn't mean all of your tires are terrible. So, we don't want to generalize, we don't want to say, "Well, you know, no kids feel safe, no kids feel like they belong," because a lot of our data is really, really pretty strong in some of these areas, but definitely have work to do. So, I'll close with that.
Thank you. Julie?
Yeah, I, my first question that I was going to ask Michelle was, well, you know, why can't you just, during, in the enrollment process... why can't you just during, in the enrollment process, get permission to just do all of these surveys? And then you somewhat clarified with it that there is some legislative ruling. So, can you give, what actually is that requirement?
So, when a parent gives permission to do a survey that has to do with social emotional or character development, that, that, the clock starts ticking and there's a four-month window where that survey needs to take place.
Ah, that's interesting.
And after that four months, you have to ask again to, to survey the kid again.
Yeah, that, that's very interesting.
You would think, I mean, a lot of our permissions, we do our annual.
Uh huh.
So, you would, you know, but yeah, that's the, so that's part of why, and truthfully, even the, the way we're doing it on ParentView is new-ish, was new-ish last spring. So, I think there'll be more and more parents opting in, in the spring.
Yeah, yeah, very good. Just looking at your detail information here, which this is very helpful, I, I think it's very positive that on the 24, 25, in comparison to the 23, 24, that there was like a 5% better response relative to feeling a sense of belonging at my school. So, that, that's a, that's a very positive reaction. The one that really surprises me and seems like, really surprises me, I thought it would be much better, is the, is the results of there are adults at my school who know me well. To have those be as low as they are, kind of, I mean, I, you know, it's prob, now when I say that, it's probably reflective of those who are there at that school for the first time. And so, they've only been there for, what, three months when they're taking it in October? But that, that seems like one, by springtime, we can really have a higher, a higher percentage on. So, it's going to be interesting to compare not only, you know, the fall results to the spring results, but to also compare the spring results of this year to the spring results of last year. You might, that might be really a better indication of our improvement than comparing spring to fall. Anyway, thank you for the information. I'm, I'm very interested in this and my granddaughter told me when she took it in April. So, I was kind of surprised, oh, you did one in October. I didn't know about that one, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Noc?
Yeah, I was going to say, spring 2024 with spring 2025 and fall 2024 with fall 2025 might be a more apt comparison. Some questions, so how representative was, were the student response, the student respondents in fall 2024 relative to our entire student body? Or in other words, like how, how much of an indicator does, you know, these 18,000 responses, I think like one out of three, that's a really good response rate, by the way, like how reflective of that is like of our entire student body?
The, the 18,000, so you?
I should specify more so, like if we're to break it down, looking at like disaggregating by demographics, like, does the data match our student body?
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that and I can sure ask our, ask Will Graves. Like I, I did my little, my little, I'm not a statistician, but it, that is, that is a very interesting, interesting question. I'm not sure if he can break that down by that. I don't know if we have recorded the actual student IDs or if it's, but that's a great question.
It's anonymous.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay.
As far as that goes.
Yeah.
I would say for the, the last spring, I don't know, I mean, it would, it would have, I don't know how to say it, the parent would have had to check the email, the parent would have had to get into ParentView, the parent would have had to check the box. There were several steps that needed to happen, so that could have elevated, right? If I'm an engaged parent, my kid maybe feels more engaged, I don't know. But I would say the 18,000 is pretty, pretty indicative. Now, we started in second grade, is that right?
Third.
Third grade. So, this is third through 12, 18,000 students, so.
I, I think just the, the major caveat, there, there might be a major non-response bias in that, again, like the students that didn't take this survey might very well have, you know, significantly different perceptions than the students that did take the, did take the survey. Something else I would, I think would be helpful for the board, would be to look at the response rates of these, you know, of all the different school buildings, just seeing where it is that we could really, you know, beef up our recruitment efforts and then like for the schools that, you know, have had like those extremely high response rates, like, you know, what is it that they're doing that, you know, our other school buildings could emulate? But yeah, yeah, last question slash point, it would be really helpful if we were to have a demographic breakdown and then a building level breakdown on, you know, the safety and belonging measures.
We do have the building breakdown, for sure. The demographic, we do not, so, yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you, Noc. Melody?
Thank you. Thank you for the report because it's, it's, it's very telling and at some level, it's, it's a little bit, I don't know, and, you know, it just brings up questions when you look at some of the responses or the rates of responses that we see. So, along the same lines as Board Member Noc Bong was talking about, when you look at, so, and it kind of goes along with your strategies for continued progress and number two bullet, connections and collaborating. How do we, how do we propose to do that? Because I know that there are, I, I'd just like to know because I think that that's crucial. I think that's key. I can, I can understand and I can probably walk through and work through professional learning alignment, how that can change outcomes, intentional lesson, intentional lesson planning with collaboration embedded, share building data with parents, garner ideas for improvement. But connections and collaborating, because we're talking about connections, we're talking about how they relate to belonging. So, when you have a building, and I am going to actually name the building because I had, all of us have had, had, all of us have, I believe have had opportunity to have access to information that was provided by our unions that had, you know, had basically how building teachers, teachers were feeling about how their buildings were doing and how the relationships within their building was, being able to create and foster this positive and belonging atmosphere. So, the one building that I know was doing, that showed just stellar comments was Washington Elementary. And that is a new, I mean, they did get some additional newcomers. They got individuals from Park, if I recall. So, when you look at a building such as that that's doing well, the individuals that are at that building feel very comfortable. Their scores are very high when you look at the belonging and the connection. Is there something that we can pull from those buildings? Once again, this is along the same lines that Noc has stated, that could be shared that, because evidently they're doing some things well. And I'm, I, I don't want to say right, because I don't think it's right or wrong, but they're doing some things that are working, that works for their building. So, maybe other buildings could adapt it, modify it where it would meet their culture. So, I'll leave that. Then I'm wondering if that could occur. And then I'll go back to the question and that is, how will we, how, what will that look like? Connections and collaborating in our buildings as it relates to improving the survey outcomes?
Well, I think you're, you're absolutely spot on when you talk about Washington, right? And that has been historically part of our principal learning academies is to share ideas. We are working on what we're calling a playbook. So, what is the, what is your school's playbook for increasing the sense of belonging and safety? So, we're sharing some of those ideas. A lot of that stems from our work with Restorative Practices. And so, but we could obviously do a better job of that, right? We can always do better and that, that's kind of on us as, as the leaders to allow that time and the, and the, the processing of that. In terms of just building culture, there is an art and a science of teaching, right? And, and so, we have focused on the science quite a bit and you have seen how our, our reading results are improving, right? Amanda Sharshel was here and shared some great news. So, we need to take that same, take the time and that same energy into some of the art of how do we, how do we build relationships, right? Is it through literature and is it through asking questions in literature? We've done some work in the past called biography-driven instruction and some strategies that we need to pull back out for some of our newer principals and our newer teachers that allow students to bring themselves and their home life and their culture and their experiences to learning, to make those Velcro hook connections to new learning, right? And so, if, if you share a story about, you know, what a vocabulary word means to you and I share it and I might think, oh my gosh, I, I never would have thought of that, but now I have that Velcro hook for, for another situation, right? So, it's, it's instructional strategies, it's being relational, it's circles, it's, it's the joy in the classroom, right? And I know you and I were lucky enough to be at Spate not too long ago to see that joy in the classroom. So, it, it takes, it takes some time and it takes some, it takes time, right? To build relationships. And so, I too am, am excited to see some growth that we're going to have. We're going to be very specific as we work with principals. We're going to allow them to share their ideas too, right? We, I don't have all the answers. I'm not in the building any longer, so allowing them to share with each other as well.
Very good. I have one additional question and that has to do with actually attendance. So, we have another component of our survey that says students never or rarely miss school because they felt unsafe, uncomfortable, or nervous at school. And there's a minimal difference. It's a reduction, but I think it's, it's fairly minimal between 2023, 24 and 2024, 25. So, when looking at chronic absenteeism, how, how are we doing with that? Because we know that that, well, I would think that that directly correlates also. Those buildings that have higher attendance consistency in terms of attendance versus those stu, those buildings that have 25, 30, 35% chronic absenteeism. Could I get a, could the board get a report out on that or maybe?
Do you know it off the top of your head?
I don't know, yeah.
Our calendar has a report on attendance. Gil, maybe I have to pull it up. Okay, sometime in the spring. So, it's on our progress monitoring calendar.
Very good.
Then we will bring it to you. And we can get you the data now, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We're also, just, just so you know, that is part of strategic plan goal number three. We're, we're using average daily attendance also. So, the number of students that you have enrolled, the number of students that show up and you divide that percentage. Because we feel like that's in a way, a more accurate description of the trend of enrollment.
Sure.
And maybe just one kid that never shows up really changes all the data. So, but yeah, we can, we can get you updated, maybe at the end of the semester.
And we're actually going to do a report out in March, is that what I heard?
Well, Gil's looking. I don't remember what month it was.
Whenever.
It's on our schedule.
It's coming.
Yeah, it's on our schedule at some point in the spring.
All right, thank you.
So. Thank you, Mel.
I had a one final question.
Yes, Noc.
Is there a teacher and staff equivalent of the safety and belonging questionnaire?
There is, yes.
Okay, so when will we, you probably don't, we'll be getting a report out on that too, right?
I don't know if at the board table we will because that's not the strategic plan goal, but we have the information. We just wanted to keep this focused tonight, so we can, we can share that with you if you want. Yeah.
And we have parent as well.
Okay. I love that.
Yep.
Is that everybody? I was, I was going to say one last thing. June board meeting is when we'll do attendance. So, that'll be a progress monitoring update on there. Lauren also texted me from home. I don't know, elementary and middle, or hi, middle and high are both up in average daily attendance by a couple percentage points from last year till now. So, but we'll get you, we'll get you some updated numbers. Last thing I was going to say too, was, and it's perfect segue, these are our three goals, right? And this kind of bigger picture more than just Michelle's presentation. So, we're going to try to keep really focused on these goals and moving these numbers in these areas, which might mean if there's a thing that we do as a district that falls outside of really moving the needle on these three things, we may have to make a hard decision to quit doing that thing. One of the critical aspects to making sure kids feel safe and feel like they belong is that trusted adult and we need to take some things off the plates of those trusted adults in order to give them the space and the time and the energy to do the great things. I'm just thinking about Washington and the cool things they do there, right? So, anyway, just wanting to put that out there that, you know, we're, we're going to keep laser focused on these plans, on these goals, keep moving the needle and that's going to be where we really invest our, our resources and our time, so.
Go ahead, Melody.
Just, just one final comment and this is, this is for our district and that is, bravo for us for actually being as transparent as we are. This is not easy to put pub, to, to state publicly. I mean, not that it's drastic. I mean, yes, we're at 75%. That's not, that's not, that's not terrible, but it's, it's not where we want to be. And so, I just wanted to say, you know, bravo for us, us as a district, being as transparent consistently when we're looking at our goals. And what's the acronym? Those wild?
Wigs.
Wigs.
Wild, impertinent goals.
Yes.
Thank you, Melody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Latona, next item please.
Consent.
Kathy, any consent items to pull?
No.
Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Melody?
Nothing.
Diane?
Nothing to pull.
I have no consent items to pull. Hazel?
No, nothing to pull.
And Noc?
Nothing to pull.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda. Approved that.
Second.
Moved by Stan, seconded by Julie to adopt the consent agenda. Okay, we may be having a problem with the voting view.
Yeah, it must have come unplugged because it's not showing up and I can't get anyone's attention, so.
One second, it came unplugged.
That's fine. If you still point it toward Joseph, you should be able to record your vote.
It's not recording her.
Yeah. Motion carries seven zero. Appreciate everybody's patience on that. Latona, next item please.
Operations, Presentation Pre-Bond Program Creative Entourage LLC.
I'll let Kelly introduce our guests.
All right, so tonight we have an update from the feedback that was gathered really over all of November, from our constituents in our community. And welcoming Jennifer from Creative Entourage. I don't remember the new name. There's a new name, but these places are always changing their names, I feel like. Jennifer's been here a couple of months ago to share with us about the communication strategy and then tonight, she's going to share with us the updated feedback. So, the slides look like this. You probably have that.
You probably have that. And once we get her
Great.
slide deck loaded.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, thank you for having me this evening. That should pop up. There you go. So I'm excited to be here tonight and talk through a couple different things. I want to provide a quick update on where we are as far as bond issue communications and then go through the survey results from the telephone survey that was conducted a few weeks ago. So as we're moving through this communications timeline between now and February, we have, the public opinion survey has been completed. Throughout December, we're going to be doing some facility master plan communications. And some of the initial conversations that we heard just in talking to different principals, community members, things like that, there were still some questions about the master plan. What was in there, just details. And so we've been working with the communications team and the district facilities team on trying to put together some more information about that. You will start to see more information specifically about the bond issue coming up here in January. So la- late last month, we provided all of the principals with a toolkit that they can use to share with all of their staff. This is general information again about that facility master plan, specifically step one, and what that entails, what that means for every building. We also have a very detailed FAQ. I think it came out to about 11 pages when it was all said and done, based on questions that we heard from principals, from community members, things like that, and really worked to get a lot of those answers. Those are all available on the district's website now under the facility master plan page. So really working to try to get some more information out there. We also put together some flow charts with how students will be moved, if this is successful and those schools are changed, and what that will look like for different students. Starting in January, you will start to see a lot of information talking about the zero tax rate change bond issue. And that will be information coming from the district about the bond proposal. And again, how that will impact the schools and community. This will be pretty broad reaching. We'll have internal communications as far as making sure all the staff is up to speed and they know what's happening and know what's being communicated. We'll be preparing information again for the principals so that they can help get the word out to staff. What we found in a lot of communities is that people tend to ask their teachers and they tend to ask their building principals for information. So we need to make sure they have the information to answer those questions. Also external, the goal will be for everybody that lives in Wichita to know about this bond issue and have the ability to ask questions and learn information and have those questions answered. And so there will be a broad reaching external effort as well, just to try to get as many people informed and make sure they have their information before they head to the ballot box on February 25th. So next up, we're going to talk through the survey. And I know everybody is excited to see some of the data that is in here and what we learned. So there were two surveys happening at the same time with the same questions. Tonight I'm going to focus on the telephone survey. And so this was, ended up being 301 random telephone calls that were made based on phone numbers throughout the school district. So these phone calls were made from November 13th through the 18th, and they were able to get 301 completed. There was an online survey that was available to everybody in the community as well. That was open from November 11th through the 22nd. And that ended up having 2,773 responses. That was promoted through social media, the district website. And a text message was sent to as many registered voter phone numbers as we could get our hands on to try to give people the chance to provide their input and their feedback. As I mentioned, tonight because of the scientific nature of the telephone survey, and we know that that is a random sample, those are the results that we tend to rely on more when we're making decisions. What we use the online survey for is really to learn about different groups and different audiences and allow us to see, are there certain areas of the community that maybe don't have information about the bond issue yet or may have specific questions? And so once we have those results finalized, we can really get into that more granular data with that larger sample size. Our data team is still pulling that data because it did close just a little over a week ago with Thanksgiving in there, late Friday night. So they're still pulling that information as we speak. So looking at those telephone survey results. We always start with just a basic question of if you were to grade public schools in Kansas, what grade would you give them between an A, B, C, D, and F? And then we ask them the same question for Wichita public schools. This is kind of a warm-up question, just to get people thinking about education. As you can see, a little bit higher on those A ratings. And then the state rating tends to go up a little bit, where they have a little bit higher favorability for those state level schools over WPS. So just something to keep in mind. This is a great question to keep on your surveys if you do public opinion research moving forward, because it's great data that you can track. So as you're working on these goals and things like that that you were talking about, this is a good question that you can use just to see about performance. So next up, we start asking for statements about their local public schools and really what they think about different things within your schools. So the area that had the strongest level of agreement, oh, sorry. There we go. The area that had the strongest level of agreement was, sorry, I've got notes on this screen. There we go. That we need to provide school buildings that can accommodate up-to-date teaching and learning methods. If you look at that, you had 89% of your community agrees with that. That really that you as a district need to be providing those types of buildings that can support students and teachers and what they need today. They also really felt the need to update the school buildings and how that will have an impact on the city as a whole. And so there's that awareness of how it goes beyond just the schools, it's the community as a whole. The next question really gets at the heart of property values and how people maybe perceive the school's relationship and how those taxes tie in to homeownership and things like that. This is pretty common for this to resonate high within communities and to realize that how those property values are directly tied with the quality of the school district. So this is a pretty common statement to be within those top three or four on your survey. As far as falling behind other area school districts, while this was still, you know, almost a 65% strongly agree, not as high as we see in some other districts. And so I don't think that there is really a large perception that you're falling behind maybe your neighboring districts that you have here. Next up, we look at those trust numbers. Everybody's always curious to see these as far as I trust the Wichita Public Schools leadership to make decisions about improving our school district. A 60% agreement is a high trust rating. We always like to see that above 50. And I know that doesn't sound too high, but a number in the 60s is good. We have seen these in the 30s and 40s before, and those are the ones where you get worried. Because then it's do, are people going to question decision-making? Are they going to, you know, allow you to move forward as a district? And so those trust numbers are good based on other surveys that we've done. Our district wastes tax dollars maintaining old buildings that are too small for efficient operation? Right down the middle. But, you know, I don't think that there is necessarily that knowledge that these older buildings are expensive to maintain. And so I think that's something that we need to communicate about and really maybe talk about that a little bit more to make sure all those facts are there. Next up, we asked about a couple different categories as far as just the perception of the district. And we asked the participants to rate these areas on a 10-point scale. If the district is doing a great job, we ask them to give it a 10. A poor job, we ask them to rate it as a 1. If you look at the areas in the green on the right, those are the highest. And the areas in the yellow on the left are the lowest. So when you look at the highest perception item, transportation. So if you look at that, people are happy with your transportation. They're happy with safety and security. They feel that you're doing a good job in that area as well. And then going on from there, I think there may be some room for growth in far as involving the community and some of those decision-making and things like that. And also buildings that are right-sized and efficient to operate. So I know that we're working on resizing and right-sizing some things. And so that maybe people are realizing that, but we still need to fill the gap. So next up are the priorities. And these are a lot of items that are in your facility master plan. And it's asking the community, do you think these are important too? So we know from a school district standpoint, for us to reach our strategic goals, you're, these are important. But what do you as a community think? The highest priority from their perspective really fell under that accessibility piece, the strengthening safety and security. These are pretty commonly high items, and so those weren't too surprising to us. But what did come in a little bit higher than other surveys we've done is ensuring building conditions are the same for students throughout the district. And so I think that there is some knowledge there of letting people know how different your buildings are. You have lots of them and they're very different. And are they providing the same opportunities for all of your students? Renovating and repairing building infrastructure, so your roofs, your HVAC systems, your walls, all of those things, again, one of those top priorities. Moving into that second tier, which just weren't as high as the other one. Most of these, besides that last one, didn't really come in as a low priority. So providing an up-to-date career education center, you had a decent rating on that, along with providing modern classrooms and labs where needed, and then providing a new and expanded early childhood center. Again, the priorities for the early childhood center and also the consolidating the older, smaller schools weren't as high as some of those other priority items as far as providing the same opportunities for kids and making sure we have accessible buildings. So next up, we actually got into some of the specifics on the pieces of the prom proposal. So those areas that will be covered as we start to communicate about this. And so what we asked is for each of these, does this make you more inclined to support this or less inclined? So kind of getting it, what are their feelings about it? This was one of the higher numbers I've seen as far as much more likely to support when we talk about taking care of roofs, windows, HVAC, electrical. Take care of what we have. We've got, we've invested a lot of dollars in these buildings. And how do we take care of them as we're moving forward? And also, how does repurposing buildings and rebuilding buildings free up funding to take care of the other buildings that we have? And so there's some efficiencies of scale and some things like that. Improving our schools will strengthen our city for many future generations of students and homeowners. Again, this ties back to knowing that broader impact that this will have outside of just the schools. There's definitely a correlation between the better school facilities and student performance. And so there's an understanding there. I did think this was interesting. If you look at a 70%, this kind of resonated positively with them, that a comprehensive building improvement plan would inject millions of dollars into our local economy. So if you notice, a lot of these questions that we were asking about just the greater impact and the greater good resonated here. And it doesn't happen in every community, so that kind of caught our eye. Again, the closing buildings and how they're more expensive to operate did not rate as high. And so I think that there's, again, just some awareness building that we probably need to continue to do about that. And also it didn't seem too important that it's been more than a decade since you've done a facility plan. That's not too uncommon. We've seen that in a lot of communities. It's almost a sense of, well, you've made it last this long, just keep doing what you've been doing. And so it's not uncommon for that not to bubble up to the top. As far as, we were trying to get a little bit at that issue on neighborhood schools. Because you have, you went through some consolidations, we're looking at doing those again. And it was kind of split down the middle. So we, we didn't see a huge swing either way with that one. And then again, your trust numbers were still high. So when we asked about the trust, it's okay that that was the last one on the list because it's actually a negative question, so. So what we like to call the, the big question on the survey. What, what do our support numbers look like? And is this something that the community is willing to get behind? And is it something that they would like to see done with your schools? So we always ask this question at the very beginning. So right after I showed you the question of the A, B, C, D, and F, we asked this question. Wichita Public Schools is planning a $450 million bond proposal to replace and consolidate existing schools, provide a new early hood, a new early childhood education center, a career training center, and repair and renovate other buildings. So first ask, we haven't talked about anything at all regarding the bond issue. You're at a 64% favorability, okay? So then what we do is anybody that was undecided or opposed, we let them know that it would not change the current bond mill levy. It would stay exactly the same as it was before. So out of that chunk that we pulled, another 31% favored. So at the beginning of the survey, you were sitting at about a 75% favorability rating on the bond proposal, which is good. So we tend to like to see numbers above 60% and so 75 is strong. We go through the survey and it gives people time to think. It gives people time to learn maybe about some of the issues that you're facing. Some of the things that you might be looking at with the bond issue. So all those other questions that we talked about. And then we ask the same question again, and we call this reconsideration. And so when we asked it at the end, you went up to a 77.6. So what that tells us is that people may need a little bit more information. And if we can continue to inform them, that's going to continue to increase. When we see this being flat, that often means that that education may already be out there. People may already be really well informed about this. The other thing that I thought was interesting on here, if you look at the bottom right there, you had a 20.8 strongly favor, oops, sorry. 20.8 strongly favor at the beginning. And then when we go to the end, you're up to 42.3. So I think as people learn about this and as they understand it, there is a willingness to help you move things forward. So questions, I know I just went through a lot of numbers and statements.
Thank you, Jennifer. I always appreciate your summaries. They are, you don't read the presentation to us. You, you give us a great summary. I appreciate that. My first question is whether or not, did, on these responses, did you combine the push survey? Meaning we were, you know, making people aware of this survey and we encourage them to participate? And the poll, and the telephone poll, which was random, which is a scientific poll? Did you combine those two or are these numbers from one or the other?
This is straight telephone. This is only your telephone.
So these results are from the scientific poll that you were trying to match all, our demographics of our city.
Right, as well as we could. So we always work for the, the kind of two key ones that we can model are parent, non-parent, and male, female. And then we work to get all of those other demographics and age groups filled in as well.
Did you have a split between, did you see a split between anyone who has a child in the schools and those who are not, do not have a child or a grandchild in the school district? Or were, were you able to separate that out?
We are able to separate that out. I just got all of that data this morning and was looking through it. The parent favorability was a little bit higher than your non-parent.
Which would make sense.
Yeah, which is good, because there are districts where it's not, and that gets concerning. And so your parent on the first ask, I had this pulled earlier. Parent support at the end. We'll get all of this information to you too. Your parent's support at the very end was at 84%.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And then two, last two questions. Did you see a difference? Or did you able to extract the possibility that there's still some confusion about a zero tax rate increase? And I, I think you had a chart on there, but that showed the big, that showed the big difference once they understood it was a zero tax rate increase. And I, I just, the only reason I bring that up, because I think I knew the answer to that. But I wanted everyone to understand that we took time this summer because we, we looked at the possibility of doing a 480. Which again, when you compare it per student, per capita, per student, it's still a lot lower of an ask than surrounding school districts have done. But I, I think it's significant to know that there's a positive reaction to the fact that we didn't take a 480, which would have been a slight increase versus keeping it a zero tax rate increase. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then my last question is, I found it interesting under priority of improvement consideration. And this is something I told Kelly many years ago when, my early years, when I picked up on the fact that the public was extremely interested in our career education curriculum. And that I personally, anecdotally, would find out that if I talked about various issues, I'd get a normal response. But when I dove into career education readiness, But when I dove into career education readiness, the responses would jump. And so, your survey is showing that the public is interested that the Wichita Public Schools continue to use our resources into this whole area. We call it broadly being future-ready, but a lot of it's very career-oriented and college readiness, getting corrected, ready on that in that area. And I, again, another softball question, but that's what you found as well.
Yeah, I mean, looking here, we're probably 60% or so see it as a high priority, which is a lot. So, definitely something to build upon. And then I also think a lot of those pieces where it's kind of the greater good of the city, that falls under job training and making sure that students are prepared to join the workforce here as well and to, to help in those areas and help support businesses. So, I think there's a, there's a couple of layers of that sentiment throughout the survey that maybe you don't get right at CTE.
Okay. Melody?
Thank you. This is, this is encouraging. I have a question from your anecdotally or possibly substantiated perspective. When you look at a rate of 60% or more, typically, what does that pan out in the actual vote?
So, there's, there's a lot of factors and there's a lot of what-ifs. If the election were tomorrow, we could say that those would probably come in pretty close. A lot can happen between now and February. And so, that's kind of where we are typically with survey numbers in that range. If your turnout is good and you have a good number of voters out, it, it does lean positive.
And there was a, there was a point that was raised by one of our public speakers early. And it was that the survey, and I believe I'm correct on this, but that the survey that was leading questions. How do you respond to that?
A lot of these questions, so we customize every survey to meet the needs of the district, but we also make sure that they are not biased or leading. And so, a lot of these, the way the questions are written are actually meant to not be leading. And so, the goal is to really get at the heart of what people are thinking and what their feelings are about these issues, so.
And what I found interesting, as well as I could identify with it, is that you actually ask questions that would evoke from, from the, from the potential voter even more information involved either questioning or being able to develop a better understanding of what it is that we were trying to ask for. And, and then tied it back to the master plan. So, that made, that made sense to me, you know, as, as I was actually reading, reading through it. And when you look at the community outreach that's coming up, what, what is that going to look like? Exactly, how do you define community?
So, we're going to be looking actually at a lot of this survey data. And so, as I mentioned, I got some of that data this morning, and we have by zip code, all of these questions. And so, those areas where we may see some dips in understanding or some, really, maybe there was a zip code where the modern classrooms was really, really negative. Well, let's look and see what was happening there and what's going on. I think that within those areas where some of those schools are being consolidated, where the new early childhood center is being proposed, I think we need to get in and do some actual events with some of those community leaders within those smaller communities in January. And have a chance to kind of dream a little bit and have some dialogue and, and look at what may be in that neighborhood once these improvements and updates are made. So, I think those are some of the outreach pieces we need to look at doing.
No, I, I, I think that you're spot on with that. I would be very eager to be involved in some of that as well. You know, from a board perspective, I know we don't lobby and/or advocate, but we do educate. And so, you know, from an at-large position, that's, that's the board position that I have, that I would be looking at it across this district very, very keenly. So, I'll be looking forward to that community outreach. And I think you've answered my question when it comes to who did we miss? And how do we go back and, how do we factor that in? If there's something that you think you might need to add.
If we missed as far as...
As far as race, gender, age, zip code, all of it?
I was looking through a lot of these, and I think we hit the mark pretty well demographically on meeting that. And where we didn't, we picked up a little bit more in the online survey. So, for instance, this was actually a little light on that 75-plus. And I think the online pulled a little bit higher. And so, same thing with just some of those age breakdowns and also with some of those different demographic breakdowns. So, that's what's nice about having that bigger sample size on that online survey, too.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Melody. Noc?
Yeah, great. Overvee, I also appreciate the line of questioning that Stan and Pelleti had, especially when it came to like the demographic breakdowns. Do you guys have geospatial data in terms of like where people, like the addresses of like where people, you know, people, you know, for the telephone survey, you know, where they live?
We just have zip code because we want to make sure it stays anonymous. And so, we only have zip, and so it, it kind of depends on what they told us where they live.
And so, would you guys be able to assign a higher weighting to zip codes that generally, especially when it comes to like local municipal elections, have higher turnout?
We couldn't for any of the district efforts. So, for the school district, they have to focus on everybody as a whole and talk to everybody the same, if that makes sense.
More so, sorry, more so like in the, like the results, like assigning a higher weighting, you know, to these folks that live in, you know, higher propensity zip codes? This might be a, a, a later question. Another question I had, so generally in the, in the school districts that were successful with their bond issues, did they have, you know, grassroots, door-to-door canvassing operations? Can you speak more to that?
Yes, absolutely. So, that is a big piece of this that needs to be volunteer-led and volunteer-driven. And so, if there is a community group that wants to form to volunteer, that door-knocking and that individual outreach is going to be hugely important, especially for a special election like this to drive turnout.
And then last question, for the priority of improvement under consideration, like when it came to the high, high priority, median priority, low priority, et cetera, et cetera. It's been a while since I took the survey, so I can't remember. For clarification, the priorities, rankings, was it like top one, top like one, two, three? Like, how did that work?
It was one through 10. Second, pop back to those. And so, what we look for there are those ones, and it's, we do one through five, then six through eight, then nine and 10. And so, what we're looking for is anything that's really glaringly popping out as one of those low items or one of those high items. And then they've got the middle range. And so, really what we're looking for is, are there going to be any issues or any challenges that are going to come up throughout this informational effort that we'd need to address?
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Noc. Hazel?
Yes, my question is, considering the size of our district and the size of our community, are you satisfied with the response numbers that we received? And how does that compare to other surveys that you've done?
For the 300 sample size is what we typically do for a district of this size, just based on sampling error and things like that. And as far as the online survey, we just wanted to see that over about 1,500. So, once we hit that 2,000 mark, we were good with that. And as I mentioned, with some of those breakdowns, some of it isn't necessarily overall numbers. It's, are we getting enough of the different types of people taking the survey?
Okay, and then will we have another survey to see where we are and where we're standing before we finish or how?
Nope, this will likely be it. If there, if, we have for clients in the past, if something drastic happens and there is a dramatic event of some kind, we can go back out in the field for a short tracking survey just to see if anything would have shifted or changed.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Hazel. Any other questions? Jennifer, we really appreciate your time. Because we're gonna talk about the, the second half.
I'm gonna turn things over to Luke and step away, so thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. No, no, thank you. Welcome, Luke.
Thank you. Surprise, there's a part two.
I knew there was a part two, but I thought Jennifer was involved in that, too.
All right, well, good evening. My name's Luke Newman. I'm the director of facilities for Wichita Schools. I just want to start by thanking Jennifer and creative entourage for being here tonight and just sharing the good news. I think we're, it's very positive information that was shared. And I look forward to just the continued partnership with, with Jennifer and her team. It's been a great experience working with them and just appreciate their collaboration and working with them through this process. So, look forward to it moving forward. So, tonight, my part of the presentation is I really just kind of want to build on this groundwork of support that's already kind of been shared, but really reinforce what the advantages of the, of the bond are. Specifically, as it pertains to our capital improvement plans moving forward and what our strategy, strategy will look like there. And how truly beneficial this bond plan, if it passes, will be to all of our facilities, not just those that are specifically named in, in the bond plan. Okay, as the board is well aware, we are facing an uphill climb with regard to our large-scale capital replacement needs. Because of our aging infrastructure and the, the volume of need that comes along with aged infrastructure, we are consistently dealing with competing priorities with regard to our capital improvement replacements that are needed across the board. And so, we find ourselves consistently operating in a place in a very reactive mode or a reactive approach, rather than the proactive, which is what we, what we strive to, to operate more in. And so, the bond plan to implement step one of the master plan would give us the ability to rebuild seven schools and renovate an additional three while closing a total of 10 buildings on top of it. And one of the key aspects of the plan is that it allows us to get out from under a significant amount of large-scale capital improvement needs in those facilities through the rebuilds, the renovations, and the closings. And so, in turn, that frees up capital dollars and positions us to more intentionally invest in those proactive measures and those, those proactive capital replacements to extend the longevity of the rest of our facilities that are not specifically named in the bond plan. So, with that said, if the bond passes, we feel comfortable dedicating $11 million of our facilities' capital budget towards intentional investments in our, in our large-scale maintenance replacements district-wide. And $11 million represents just over 50% of our capital allotment in facilities. In, in speaking with Ms. Lowell, we have, we feel good about $20 million being the budget that we will have in facilities over the next five years, which would be in line with the bond term. And so, so yeah, a little over 50% of that, we feel like we could, we could set aside to this dedicated effort. So, what we're talking about is essentially, and these are existing dollars. This is, these are not new dollars. These are, this is our capital budget that we have year over year. But we're talking about a plan that supplements our bond program to the benefit of everyone. So, essentially, what we're talking about is that $11 million investment every year that we're setting aside, we'd still have that extra $9 million that we would keep reserved for the reactive management and those issues that pop up like our east highs and our north highs and things like that. But it would allow us to have that kind of freed-up money that we can, that we feel good about with getting out from under those deferred maintenance needs of these other facilities that we're touching with the bond, that we can now say, hey, we have some dedicated dollars that we're going to proactively address these needs that we see coming on the horizon. So, over a five-year term, we would, we would anticipate having about $55 million that we would be running in conjunction with the bond program and the financing with it, that we would be taking our capital and going alongside it, if that makes sense. So, drilling a little down, a little deeper into this, we've got our, the pie chart here in front of you. This, this pie chart is essentially just a general breakdown of what we think it could look like. And this is all data that was taken from our facility assessments that were conducted, that's tracked in our VFA software used for our capital planning. And so, just, this is representative of our entire district and how we would anticipate basically taking that $11 million per year and spreading it across the board to where it touches all of our facilities district-wide. So, you can see from the pie, pie graph here, you know, you've got 36% building, building envelope, which is going to be your roofs and your, your exterior restoration work and windows, things like that. We've got a good slice of the pie dedicated to HVAC systems, so on and so forth. So, this is kind of a general snapshot of how we could, of how we see it playing out based on the priorities that we are aware of. And this is really just kind of a, just, I'm not going to run through the list, but to give you an idea of what all these systems entail when, when we look at kind of the main things we would be wanting to address with these dollars. We've got some grounds improvements, building envelopes, interior finish improvements, HVAC systems, electrical systems, and plumbing. And so, this will look different for every facility. You know, there's going to be some facilities that don't need HVAC improvements, but they do need interior finish replacements. And so, just evaluating our entire district and prioritizing these different needs based on, based on the specific facility itself and the information we have tracked in our systems already. This slide just shows, it's another way of looking at the snapshot and how we would slice up the pie. We looked at it by quadrant. And the interesting thing about this slide is that when you look at our district by quadrant, when we look at the needs, whether it be building envelope or HVAC plumbing systems, our needs are pretty consistent across the board, which tells me that we've done a really good job from an equity standpoint of making investments throughout town, you know, based on, based on need. And it hasn't been that we've addressed, you know, HVAC in one part of town, but we've neglected another. I think we've, we've done a good job spreading out, out our, out our dollars and making sure everybody gets something over the years, so. And then here, again, just looking at it another way, the way we would distribute the investment by school type, trying to be very intentional about, about how we spread it out to where everybody, again, everybody is getting something as a result of this, of this bond potentially passing, to where you've got your high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools. Special schools are represented on this pie graph as well. And it's a smaller slice just because their, their square footage and their quantity of schools is much smaller in scale compared to the rest of our schools. So, trying to make sure we spread it out appropriately and evenly across our district. And this is my last slide, but I think it's probably the most exciting one. This, it really just shows a snapshot, the, the spreadsheet here of kind of how the dollars will be allocated. It's a, I think when you see the dollars and just the investments in the different quadrants and this happening on top of bond dollars flowing into our system, is an exciting prospect for me. And particularly, I want to highlight the middle school and high school notes that I have on this slide for HVAC in the gyms, and that's 4.5 million we would, we would be dedicating to gyms in our high schools and 2 million in our middle school gyms. And this is specifically to address adding air conditioning to our gyms that currently do not have air conditioning. Right now, we have some schools where there are two gyms, one has air conditioning, the other doesn't. We have some where we have two gyms and neither one has air conditioning. Some schools where they both have air conditioning. So, it's a, it's kind of a broad range of conditions and we want to make that equitable across the board. And it's something I hear about every year, about people wanting HVAC in their gyms. And so, excited to add that to this plan and make it something that we would be sure to address as part of it. Also, want to just specifically highlight high schools a little bit more. Our bond plan includes provisions for, for addressing high school maintenance needs. But, and so, we're talking about, you know, addressing the, the maintenance needs through bond dollars, addressing HVAC in our gyms for high schools. But also, if we go back to the last slide, if you, if you go off of the 32% of the total $55 million in investment going towards high schools, that's a total of $17,600,000 that would be going. So, so we'd have the bond dollars going towards ma, high school maintenance and we'd have the additional $17 million that actually includes the high school gym, 4.5 million. But a significant amount of money that, and investment we would be making in our high schools to just continue, to continue that investment. We know we're not doing anything in our, in our bond plan and at least in step one of the master plan for our high schools. But we know our high schools are a critical, critical aspect of, of who we are as a district. I mean, absolutely, right? And so, we want to make sure... to make sure that we maintain those, want to make sure their longevity is sustained. And so, just continuing to keep those up and make those critical investments where needed, we really want to be sure to do. So, in conclusion, the main takeaway tonight is really just that all schools stand to benefit greatly from this plan. I'm really excited about the prospect that this, that this opens up for us, as you can tell. Hope you're excited as well, and our public, and our public is excited too. So, with that, I'll, I'll open it up for questions.
I was just going to jump in and-
Go ahead.
-one quick thing, just to echo and amplify what Luke just said. One of the questions we hear a lot is, well, which schools, if I don't know anything about the bond issue, which schools are going to be impacted? And the answer is all of them, right? I think what he just showed us is that even if your school's not named on the bond issue plan, it's going to be impacted by a yes vote, right? If we, if we get this passed, it will be impacted in, in all sorts of ways, including our high schools. Our high schools weren't really talked about nearly as much as we were going through all the FCI's and the enrollment and capacity and all that kind of stuff. But they stand to benefit a lot too. And hopefully, if you rewind all the way back to, what was it, May of '23 or July of '23, when we looked at these big FCI numbers, and it was a little bit overwhelming, and it was a little bit like, oh, what are we going to do? Like, can we ever dig our way out? Hopefully, you can see that we're, we can start to get there, right? We can really start to put a dent in some of the deferred maintenance, some of the things that we'd like to do. And we can do that with a zero rate change bond issue, right? That's the other thing I was going to say when Jennifer was up here, but I think Stan kind of said it, but it was an intentional decision by this board to both lower taxes and create a bond levy plan that wouldn't increase that levy in the future. So, most of the community, I don't think, probably was watching our August meeting, when you guys made this decision, that we went from 7.8 something, something to 7.5 something, something. We lowered you, not we, you lowered taxes, and that is the new rate that we're looking at moving forward and asking voters to approve that zero change. So, I think that's critically important, a 14-year low. Our mill rate has not been this low in the last 14 years. And that's because of a strategic decision you made. So, this isn't about, I really think this is the, back to Michelle's presentation in the with box, us with our community, we're hearing our community that, you know, property tax, valuation has been going up, property taxes are an issue. So, we hear you, but we also hear our building needs assessment, our FCI scores, we hear from our buildings all the time, we have needs. And so, how do we put these two things together for a positive solution? We think we're there, and hopefully, our community does too.
Thank you. Julie?
Well, thank you, Luke, and also Jennifer, is that?
Yeah, and Jennifer. I'm very excited to see this presentation. I, I'm normally a half-full cup person as opposed to a half-empty cup person. But I also, when I saw this was going to be on the board agenda tonight, I, you know, I also asked the realistic question of, well, if this survey doesn't come in positive, you know, what are we going to do? And I'm really pleased to not have to ask that question because the survey did come out very positive and very promising relative to other school districts that, that you all have worked in relative to having it be promising relative to the possibility of passing a bond issue. So, I'm very excited to see those numbers, very, very pleased with that. But I think, Luke, your presentation is even more positive for me than even the fact that we can pass the bond issue because it, because if we don't pass the bond issue, then you are just really behind and really struggling relative to how to keep our facilities in a positive place. And if we do pass the bond issue, then you can take your capital outlay budget to actually make some significant improvements, make some significant progress, deal with some of those low FCI scores, put air conditioning in gyms that aren't air-conditioned. And so, so I'm, I'm really thrilled with how this whole thing comes together in a great package of positive look forward to our February 25th vote, and then positive look forward for facilities in this district with not only those bond issue monies, but also the capital money. So, I'm very pleased and optimistic about February 25th.
Thank you very much. Diane?
Thank you for the presentation. Luke, if you can go back to the slide for capital improvement supplemental plan. And I know we've been having these conversations for about a year now, but if you can expand on deferred maintenance, we've been talking about this so long. You say there's an $11 million a year of existing capital budget. Can you talk about what our current capital budget is, how we currently spend that, what our overall deferred maintenance schedule looks like, what that total dollar amount is versus what our budget is, just to kind of give a review for anybody watching the board meeting now?
Sure, yeah. So, our current, it goes up and down. When I first started with the district-
Broad brush numbers.
-it was much lower than 20 million. But on average, over the last few years, it's been about $20 million in capital allotment that we have dedicated to addressing facility needs. And so, that's, that's the, that's the pot of money I'm talking about. That money hasn't changed, it's staying the same. The difference now, if the bond passes, is that it opens up an opportunity to, or a comfort level, I guess I could say, to where we're that fewer, we have that fewer buildings that are old with high maintenance needs that we don't have to, our risk isn't as great that we have to have as much of that money dedicated for potential reactive maintenance issues that pop up, those unforeseen's that are going to happen. So, that's, that's the difference if the bond passes. And I think your other question was just in terms of our deferred maintenance needs, what our backlog is. We're currently at $1.2 billion. We've been pretty public with that number for a while now. And so, yeah, I think it's worth stating that, you know, this plan, we're not going to be able to address all of that backlog of maintenance needs, right? I think that goes without saying. But it does allow us to start taking some bites out of it.
I think one of the things that is misunderstood often, that I have many conversations surrounding, is typically what our needs are. So, let's say it's $100 million a year in maintenance needs across almost 100 buildings, and our budget is $20 million a year. And so, oftentimes, the perception is, is we're not taking care of the buildings. And it's really, deferred maintenance, what you're talking about, is that difference between our budget and what our actual need is. And there's a little bit of confusion on that. So, I was just trying to provide some clarity to that. And so, being able to dedicate so much money out of our budget per year towards being proactive on replacing a water heater at 10 years instead of waiting until it explodes at 11, and then we've got a bunch of other maintenance that comes with that, just as a homeowner, I think we can all understand that that's, that's a much better way to take care of our buildings and be a little more proactive instead of reactive. So...
I'm glad you make that point, because I think a common misconception of deferred maintenance is that there was a mismanagement of funds and that we just deferred it and we put it off-
Yes.
...and didn't get to it. But the truth is, I think we have done such a good job managing our systems that, that we have been able to continue to sustain well past the lifespan of a lot of, of a lot of our equipment. And so, and we haven't been able to replace it sooner because the funding hasn't been there. And so, it's really just equipment that's reached the end of its lifespan that we haven't, we haven't had the funds to be able to address, but we still continue to operate it. The fact that we still continue to operate it the way that we do, I think is a testament to how well we have managed the funds over the years.
And one last question. Superintendent, if you can kind of speak to, one of the questions in the previous presentation was on trust on leadership. And I know we've set in place a number of different things to have checks and balances throughout this process, to be, have a transparent plan in place. And so, we're talking about spending money within the district. Can you talk about some of the accountability things that we have in place to make sure that these dollars go to the plan that's, that we've stated, and this will be executed in the way that we're planning?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a really valid point. I think what, you know, Ms. Hohmann spoke of earlier is very valid. We've spoken about it at the board table. Decisions were made over the course of the 2008 bond issue, and decisions that were based on budget situations that were very challenging, and lots of thought and effort was put into making those decisions. But there are people that, you know, feel like, well, I would have done it this way, or we should have done that, or whatever it was. So, that, that is a real thing. There's no doubt about that. And that's part of, you know, what, what we're trying to do, and what I'm, you know, I think our efforts over the last 18 months have really been about listening to those communities, you know, you know, sitting down with leadership at Bel Air and, you know, hearing from them about how they feel about what happened in 2008 and saying, well, let's work together to figure out positive solutions for this, right? So, that's the, that's the direction we're headed, right? We're not, we're not there yet. Moving forward, I do think this, this plan lends itself to, not easier, but it's, it's in a way a little simpler than the bond issues of 2000 or 2008, because there was a, every building gets some stuff, right? So, they were touching 90 buildings with the bond issue with different, whether it's HVAC or FEMA shelters or libraries or whatever it was. This, I think, will be, I believe, if we pass this in February, we start moving dirt in summer, you know, we'll see good progress through '26. I think in a short amount of, short-ish amount of time, you know, a couple of years, the community will see, wow, that is, you know, facilities master plan step one had blank, blank, and blank, and that's what they did. And so, that's the only, you know, with me being in my seat, the only direction I know to move is forward. We can learn from the past, but we can't change what happened and not even judge what happened. It just happened. And so, moving forward, I think we will be adamant about sticking to the plan and, you know, barring any kind of huge, you know, community change, the transformational change that happens, I think we can work this plan and stick to it. We also have, I don't know if you want to speak to the bond oversight committee, but we have a community-based committee that's going to help make decisions and monitoring the, I don't know, you can describe it better than I can. Do you want to describe it?
Sure, yeah. I, I'm not going to be able to name all the names off the top of my head, but I want to say there's about 18 or so probably on the committee. We had our first meeting this past month, now that it's December, and went very well. Excited about the group that we have together. It's comprised of community members, some folks on the board. We've got some, some parent representatives, some union representatives, let's see, business representatives. So, really just tried to get voices at the table from, from all different walks of life to where they are going to act as the oversight of the whole thing. You know, wanted to run some of the items that the board approved tonight, the survey work and our CM at-risk delivery method, that was all run through the bond oversight committee. And so, we'll certainly keep them engaged every step of the way, and everything that we will bring to the board will, will be run through that committee and vetted thoroughly first. And so, yeah, that's, that's the intent of that.
Yeah, thank you. Again, that was better than I could have done. Once, probably once we, we, if we pass the bond, we will create the same sort of thing for the finances. So, financial oversight committee, a group of people that know that world and can help guide us and direct us in that world. We have, we've created a couple of months ago, the closed building committee, again, another group of, you know, interested parties and community advocates who can help us make good decisions with what to do with those buildings. So, our hope is, right, like, we don't love meetings, but we need the input, right? We need people to be with us on this. And so, our hope is that structure too, and the transparency that's been the theme of the last couple of board meetings, you know, hopefully, that all continues to build trust. So...
Thank you.
I did want to say one thing about the deferred maintenance numbers for, actually, go on, Stan.
No, no, go ahead.
No, no, no.
I was just going to say that I don't want anyone to think that we are taking these numbers as our, what our starting point is. We are not going to assume anything. We are going to assume that there's still a lot of education and details to get out to the public. And the hard work this board did this summer, which I want to thank you again for, I think part of the reason why the trust level and where our beginning point is, is because of the seven, six of you who have worked all summer hard on this. And I want to just express my opinion, gratitude for that. And the fact that I was on this board when several, when several boards passed on this issue of going with a bond. And it's because it was an easy decision at the time. As you probably know, since in the summer, you probably, each of you know how much work you've already had to put into passing a bond, and our staff work. And it is a lot easier to just say, push that off to a different time. And you took the decision to make this tough decision, to go out to the public, and I think we have a good starting point. Our kids deserve the same opportunities that every kid has in this region. And if we, and I congratulate you on the fact that we say we want to be the premier district of choice, and you're putting your money where your mouth is. And so, I appreciate that. We look forward to communicating the details of this plan in January and February. And we can make a big impact for generations to come. And I hope we will keep our eye on the prize. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
Latona, next item, please.
Policy first review, P200 Board of Education agendas and meetings.
As I said in the workshop today, do not let this frighten you. This is a big change. A lot of it's due to the fact that we have, we've changed our agenda reviews to agenda workshops, and we're doing those on Friday instead of doing three-by-threes. So, a lot of it has to do with that. But we do want to start the process of asking questions. Since this is our main policy that we go through, this is what the policy committee and staff has come up with to basically reflect where we are now with our recent changes so that we can stay within policy. We do not have to, we're not passing this tonight, but we do not have to pass this quickly in January. If we need two months to do this or three months to do this, we would do that. So, just anyone who wants to express any opinion or concerns or suggestions of change, we could at least start the process tonight. Kathy?
Thank you. I, I did speak with Latona earlier, asking her if some of us who want, I'm, okay, let me go back. I'm referring to page number one, under location, time, and types of board meetings, Roman numeral number three.
Okay.
I said, I wonder if some of us still want that hard copy. And she did mention that a draft can be mailed to us. And therefore, that is something, I prefer to have it, a packet. I'm old-school, and I like to have that paper right in front of me. So, if we can put that in there somewhere in the, in the policy that board members can still get a hard copy in draft form, and then they can look at the rest at the agenda workshop on that Friday. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I'll let Diane or Kelly kind of address the overall policy. The desire is not to get too specific, but at the same time, cover the main points so that if you have special circumstances that come up, you know, somebody doesn't claim there's a violation of policy, am I kind of on the- Am I kind of on the right form on this or?
Yeah, I think the general consensus was just because it's not written in policy doesn't mean it can't be requested. So if there's, if, like, for example, most board members had their packets mailed to them. Myself and a few other board members went to the district office to go pick them up. And we didn't have to have that written down. It was just kind of the cadence of how the board wanted it. And that was just through the board clerk and us. So I think if you still want a paper copy, we can still work that out. But I don't think it has to be spelled out in policy, if that's okay with you, if that's clear.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Latona, is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. My next question is on page five, Roman numeral number two, under consent. Excuse me. It says, "In order to make efficient use of time and avoid prolonging regular meetings unnecessarily, board members will seek to present questions and resolve concerns related to consent agenda items at the agenda workshop preceding the regular meeting. Pulling of consent agenda items at regular meetings by board members who have failed without good cause to make inquiry regarding those items at agenda workshop is heavily discouraged." My concern with that is it's known that I ask questions. I'm not afraid to. If I am encouraged strongly to ask these questions at the workshop and then I don't need to talk about them at the board meeting, my concern is that the community will not hear my questions and will not hear your answers. So I'm just, I'm just thinking that that is eliminating and restricting some transparency that we're so working very hard to accomplish for our community and our stakeholders.
I think the, what we've talked about before in the past is if there's a consent item that needs to be discussed at the board table, it'll be removed from consent and put on the agenda as a regular item. So that way it can be discussed here. But I think the purpose of consent is for efficiency. And so if there's just general, hey, I'm curious about this kind of question, then we want to do that at the agenda review. And then the purpose of the evening board meeting is really on student outcomes.
So I'm, if I have a consent item that I want to pull, Friday, we've gone through the workshop and I understand over the weekend, I'm like, ah, man, this, you know, can I pull it still?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
The last sentence says, "The failure of a board member to pull a consent agenda at the item, at the agenda workshop shall not preclude that agenda item from being the subject of discussion at a regular meeting."
And is that what you're talking about, is that you would move it from consent to an item on the agenda?
Yeah, I think it's a good faith effort to, it's not saying that there can't be questions. That right's not taken away, but if there's a consent item that ends up, there's been a few over the past few years that we end up removing from consent to put on the agenda because there is general public interest or there needs to be discussion at the board table. So consent's just for efficiency.
Okay, and so this is not saying that we cannot pull any?
No, but it's a good faith effort to have your questions at agenda review.
I would chime in though, because a piece of it too is us being prepared for whatever that question is, especially if the intent is to share a message with the broader public. If we don't know the question until, you know, 6:00 PM on a Monday night, we may not have the answer. If we, even if it's Monday at 3:00 PM and you say, hey, I want to ask about blankety-blank, then we can at least prepare an answer. We can always get you an answer later if we don't know it on the spot. But what we're trying to do is coordinate staff, their time.
Sure.
Remember the football helmet example from the retreat last year where do we want staff spending time looking at how much it costs to recondition football helmets? And sometimes we need to ask those questions. I don't say, don't do that. But if we can, the better we can be prepared, the better off, you know, all of it will go.
And I think with the thoroughness of the workshops, it escorts this idea in here. And I think that it compromises, not compromises, it complements itself. Just one more thing, Mr. Research.
You still have the floor.
Okay, page eight, under board voting. I'm, I really need clarity here and I've needed it ever since I became a board member. We have a yes vote, we have a no vote, and we have an abstain vote. Why do we have an abstain vote if it's still a no vote? I'm curious. I mean, please help me.
I've asked, I've asked the same question.
Is that a statute? Is that a 259 thing? Is that a board thing?
It's a board thing.
It's a board thing. So is that something that we could actually eliminate?
But it's not recorded as a no vote. It's recorded as an abstain.
No, it is recorded as a no vote.
With a note that it's abstained.
But why have an abstain if it's going to be a no vote?
Well, it's not a yes vote.
Well, it's not, well, Diane, explain it to me.
I'm just saying it's, things pass with a yes vote.
Yes, you're right. Things do pass. But for voting records for board members who might not want to say, I like, if I abstain, that just means I'm neutral. That's how I interpreted what abstain meant, is I am neutral, I'm not voting yes and I'm not voting no. That's what I thought it was.
I mean, it's recorded in the minutes that a vote, for example, a vote will pass 5-2 with one member voting no and one member voting abstain.
And then it's announced that the vote passes 5-2?
That is in the meeting minutes.
Okay, so I guess, okay.
Only the yes votes go towards creating a yes for the board purposes. So that's why it has to be considered a no, even though it's defined in the minutes as an abstain.
I mean, otherwise the vote count would be, like in that example, it'd be 5-1 instead of 5-2. But then you've got a board member present that's now not in the vote count.
That's if, according to this, if we leave the room, if there's a conflict of interest, we leave the room and then there's six voting and what do you do if you have a tie with that? Well, what if you got a three and three?
Then it fails.
Yeah, you have to have four.
You have to have four to pass it.
So if there's a conflict of interest with an issue that's coming up for a vote and one of us leaves, because we have one, instead of voting to abstain?
You couldn't.
We couldn't.
If you have a conflict of interest, you couldn't even vote abstain.
You physically leave the room.
Could you give me an example of what a conflict of interest might be?
Anything that is related to your, well, anything that's related to your income?
Well, her husband's a contractor. If we had a, if we had a contract that we were considering in consent, but, and your husband had bid on that contract, then you would have, you would have to leave and not vote because
Right.
Your vote.
Get it passed.
Yeah, yeah, you could, you could, you could get that contract passed by your vote.
It's also possible if you worked for one of our third-party contractors or something that we approve, you know, like if you're an employee of that organization, you wouldn't want to vote, you know, take a stand on.
And I think that that is, I've read it through entirely and those are the only questions I have. Good job.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Hazel?
Yes, my question is page eight, board voting. And unless I missed it, I don't see anything there about absentee, like when we had the COVID period where people had COVID and were sick and called in and voted. Or if you're on vacation or you're unable to come, you have something that prevents you from being at the meeting, can you call in, participate in the meeting and still vote? Or is that, is that in here?
It is in here, where you can participate in the meeting, but you're not voting.
So you don't have voting?
I don't, it'll take me a minute to find it, but it is in here.
F says, "Members must be physically present at Board of Education meeting to vote on agenda items, but may participate in discussion via teleconference." It was a, it was an amendment to the policy that we did accept during the COVID years. But now that, hopefully, we don't have another pandemic. If, I guess if for some reason we did have another pandemic, we would consider this again. But right now, as it stands, once we adopt this policy, you must be physically present to vote.
Okay, and if in the future we need to amend it?
If in the future, we, yeah.
And that is the current policy?
Yes.
What's theirs, what we currently have, that's not a change.
But we, but we did have it changed for a while.
Yeah.
And then we changed it back to the original and now we're keeping it that way.
And I would add for conversation that there may be a reason for us to consider proxy voting. Because proxy voting is something that is done by corporate boards as well as public boards. I'm just saying, for consideration.
As it's, as it was, as it's written now and has been in the near future, it has to be physically present. Hazel, you still have the floor?
I'm finished, thank you.
And I appreciate you allowing me to have this back and forth because on the policy thing, we can't really do it one at a time. We're going to have to do it this way. Noc?
I would support proxy voting. Anyways, page six, first, in terms of union reports, who decides or how is it decided what subjects of mutual interest are?
Could you repeat where this is?
Page six. Yeah, I'm looking at the one with like all the, like, strike theories and all that.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, very first one, at the very top.
Number one?
Yep.
That was basically a generalized statement in that just as we asked members of the public to address and inform us what their topic is, this is a generalized statement of saying that those reports would not divert into subjects about what the city of Wichita is doing or what Central County is doing or what their favorite sports team did that weekend. This is obviously going to have to be a subject of shared interest that would fall into the category of education. But it does not restrict any kind of interpretation of, there is no mechanism to say this is not a mutual interest item. Does that make sense?
No, that definitely answered my question.
It would have to be pretty darn obvious that it's not a mutual interest item for this, that little sentence to take effect.
I appreciate that clarification.
You bet.
Page eight, board voting. We talked about it somewhat. I feel like we, I think we should have some language, a more formal definition, if you will, on what a conflict of interest is. Because we talked about it in like the financial sense, but there's also the conflict of interest in the sense of, you know, what other, you know, nonprofit boards were a part of. So looking at, you know, conflict of interest more holistically. Personally, I would like to see language that instead, you know, if there is a conflict of interest, instead of it being recommended, that it's required. Again, I don't know like how the enforcement mechanism for that would look. Something else I was wondering too would be, you know, what if, again, just hypothetically, you know, there was a board member with a major conflict of interest, but they did not announce it and they voted on it anyways. So, you know, that, again, hypothetical, but it could be a very valid concern with, you know, any future board.
Well, as you know, we're, again, this is, a policy is a generalized statement. We did not want to put the Kansas Open meeting, all the stipulations of that into the official policy. But it is something that we are constantly reminded of. We have a workshop or training coming up on that again as a refresher course. So I do understand what you're trying to say though, that member is, instead of recommend, recommended, maybe the word should be required. Is that what, is that what you're kind of saying? Because I think that's what the Kansas Open Meetings law says too, that it's required.
Okay.
Well, Noc, we're, we'll definitely, the policy committee will definitely take a look at that, that wording of recommend, recommended and required, okay?
And then what about the, what a conflict of interest means?
The conflict of interest is defined by the law itself and we didn't want to attach the entire text of the law into, otherwise you'd have another...
I get that, but what about like this very specific, like state statute?
Like cite the state statute in policy?
Yeah.
We can consider that as well.
It's KSA 754301A.
75?
754301A.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe, maybe even more relevant would be sharing that with the board, like on an annual basis as a reminder, right? Not just that we have this number in the book somewhere, but that it's active.
Yeah, actually.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think we can work that into a board retreat and have a annual packet to go over.
At the state, at the state level, there's actually a, it's not called a conflict of interest, but it is a personal, personal interest. There's an actual interest statement that we have to sign off on and it is defined in that statement. So it could be a supplemental, an addendum, you know, that we would have, that would be written, that would be signature assigned to it.
Noc, you still have the floor? Do you, do you still?
Yeah, and then on page 10, in terms of if an elementary or middle school student, this is toward the bottom, if an elementary or middle school student wishes to address the board, both a student and their parent slash guardian must register and the parent slash guardian must accompany the student to the board meeting. I'm just curious about like the rationale behind that. I think, I can imagine a lot of it has to do with like, like student privacy and confidentiality and parents' rights, but curious what the rationale behind that was and, you know, what, yeah.
The rationale behind requiring the parent to be part of it?
Yep.
I think just, just how would they get here? I mean, I don't think we want a middle school student to show up without their parent permission to a board meeting in general. So I think, I don't know if that answers it, Diane and Stan, but it just seems like good practice. I don't think we would allow, you know, a student to come to.
Yeah, I mean, they're a minor by quite a distance. High school's a little different.
Yeah, that was the rationale anyway.
All right, that's all.
All right, Melody?
I am on page three and it is under item three, board agenda and appendices, item B. So the change is items may be added to the board's agenda for a regular meeting after the preceding agenda workshop has already occurred only if these items are of an emergency nature and are authorized by the superintendent. So my question is, as the superintendent is our employee, the authorization versus what I see above that's been struck that the superintendent's recommendation and action requested of the board?
And I apologize, Melody. I'm just now getting to page three. What area is this again?
B.
The clerk shall ordinarily notify, oh, sorry.
Number three?
Item may be added to the board agenda for regular meetings after the preceding agenda workshop has already occurred only if these items are of an emergency nature and authorized by the superintendent. The rationale behind that is we send out an official notice on Thursday to the public and adding agenda items on the Monday or the Friday after the, is, is difficult.
I think the, I think maybe what you're asking is it's just superintendent and not board president.
Correct.
Or... Or, or.
I thought, my, my point is, my thing, my thinking is that it should be board president.
Yeah.
And/or board president?
No, and/or.
Board president, authorized by the board president.
I think you have to have the superintendent involved in that as well, though.
Well, he should be.
Recommended by the superintendent and authorized.
Okay, so you're saying.
Well, but the.
Going to the higher.
Yeah, but, yes, hierarchy.
Okay.
Yeah, the superintendent, we're going to, he's going to see this because, because it does cause challenges in terms of having, making sure personnel can appropriately answer the questions and whatever, but, yeah, just in looking at it.
It's not my agenda, it's your agenda.
Correct.
Yeah.
We can definitely work on.
I think you're saying is the superintendent does not authorize things for the board.
Correct.
Board authorizes things for the superintendent.
Correct.
That's what she's saying.
I appreciate that clarification, thank you very much. Melody, you still have the floor?
I'm.
Was that it? Okay. Well, Julie?
I think we just, as a board, just made a recommendation for a change, but we didn't, and we're in draft form at this point, so I don't think we have to have a motion to do that or anything. But I also heard some interest in adding to the voting a possible proxy vote. So if, I mean, how, how would we go about if we want to make that kind of a modification?
If, what we would do on that is, this will, these notes will go back to the policy committee, and then in the second draft, it will either, those recommendations or those suggestions will either be in, in there or not in there, and then they would take a separate vote. Let's say the board decide, let's say the policy committee decided to make it a proxy, a proxy vote available, but if a majority of the board did not approve of that, then they, we could entertain a motion, and I'm just using that as an example, since you used it as an example, then we would take a separate vote on that, on whether to keep that in the policy or take it out.
Got it. So you're, basically, the policy committee is going to make an attempt to make the modifications relative to how they understood.
Right.
The majority of the board to want to have it, but if that interpretation ends up needing a vote, then that, there's just a motion made at the table.
Yes, and that would be at the final read, and probably next month, you'll see these revisions or Nova revisions, I mean, I guess in theory that could happen, and then if there's still disagreement on whether words should be added or words taken out, then we will then schedule a third reading where we could have those type of motions and votes.
Great, thank you so much for that clarification.
Hazel?
Yes, what is the procedure if the policy committee does not think that it's important to put something that's requested by the board? Is there another path of a majority request? Say, say you, you decide, the policy committee decided not to include a proxy vote, but it was a majority outside of the committee that would want the proxy vote, what would, what would be the course of action?
It'd be the same as I just described, it would be a vote from the table to add words or subtract words.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So yes, you will have the fin, the majority will have the final say over the policy committee on what is finally adopted.
I think that the policy on page seven, under eight motions, is, is, I think where that lines what Stan just said, just so you can review that, because if we need more clarity there, we could add that. Does that help? What's that? Page seven, number eight, motions, that section there, so, read that over and see if that makes sense, and it looks good to everybody.
And going through this policy, just since we're talking about motions, this kind of shows you the generalization of what a policy desire, desire is, is that we really should be taking votes to recess, and in the past, we've always just, if, if we decided we needed to take a recess, we did, so, in the future, we'll probably take more formal votes on recess, that's one reason why it's good to go over these policies every once in a while.
Remind you.
That, but that's not to say, it, again, with the policy being generalized, if you did need to take an immediate recess, that doesn't mean that that recess doesn't happen. Does that make sense? Any other revisions or concerns or things you want to add or subtract or change?
No, I, I just wanted to commend the policy committee, I think they did a great job of updating and making the changes appropriate for the board.
Thank you, Melody. And again, we're not voting on this tonight, we have, obviously, we have a little work to do yet on this, and we appreciate everybody's patience on it. Latona, next item, please.
Superintendent's report.
All right, well, like, you know, when you have meetings wrap up at 8:20, you don't need to take a break, I guess, so that's, just throwing that out there. I don't have much to, to report on tonight. I do want to, I do want to thank the board, I think what the, what the speaker mentioned is very true. I think you look back on 2024, had a remarkable year of change and rapid change in our district in so many ways, and I think we've, we've treaded water, and we've, we've swam, and we've kept our head above water, and we've flourished and everything in between, so a lot to be thankful for, including the seven of you all, so, thank you for what you do for our district. The only report update I have is about legislative agenda, we are working on that, we had tried, we were, we were thinking we were, we would try to get a December touchpoint in, probably in a workshop format, so to give you guys a, a view of that, so we'll try to get that on the books with the clock ticking of busy December, so I know how that is. If we don't get to it, we'll probably do it right after we get back from break, so just wanted to give everyone that update, we, we do have that probably close to finished, I would say, I mean, I think we're, yeah, the legislative agenda document, yeah, we're pretty close. So, I just wanted to, to give the whole board and the public an update on that. Last year, I think this was maybe the meeting, we, we brought that forward, so, if you have any questions or thoughts on that, just shoot them my way. That's all I have, thank you, Stan.
Thank you. Latona, next item, please.
New business and Board of Education requests.
I do have a new business item, and if I understand the policy correct, I need permission from majority, first off, to even bring up a new, I have to identify the item, and we vote first to whether or not we are going to have new business, and then we will vote on the actual item. My motion is to bring up new business about the February board meeting and the possibility of moving it back one week due to, we have two board members that will be out of town our regular first Monday of the month in February, so pretty straightforward, but I do need a permission to bring that item up.
Yeah, or did you make your motion?
I made a motion.
So I'll second it?
Moved by Stan, seconded by Diane, to bring up a new business item about our February That passes 7-0. The motion is to move back our February board meeting from the first Monday in February to the second Feb, Monday in February, and const, and, and the agenda workshops that are related to that back one week, I don't have the exact date, I apologize.
I can share them, yeah, February 10th would be the new date.
Okay.
So workshop would be on the 7th, agenda planning on the 4th, you get your packets on the 5th, so. I think that's your motion, to move the, from February 3rd to February.
The meeting workshop?
Yeah, 2-7 would be the workshop. But I think all you're really voting on is the meeting date.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Okay, Latona, and any Board of Education requests?
No.
Thank you. Latona, next item, please.
Adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Moved by Stan and seconded by Diane to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, and we'll see you in January, if not before.